Welcome. This is actually the first episode of Channel M News. I'm your host AJ The Menace. And today I have with me Doug Hammack, uh, running for District Three School, Wake County School Board right now. Um, we were doing a little pre aired conversation, just kind of figuring out how we even came together kind of thing, right? Uh, so number one, I started this like I was kind of mentioning earlier because everybody says local politics is the most important politics, but nobody's tapped into local politics. The big funding is normally, you know, whoever the president is, the senate, they have the big funding. You know what I mean? Uh, even sheriffs, I would say, uh, you could get more visibility out of that. But even when in terms of just like, what are they saying? Are they debating? Do, what are their political campaigns? What are they actually standing for? Or we're just like basing it off of that? So when you do actually dig and start looking for things, you don't get the best mass amount of information. It really depends on each person, like how much time has each person put into their website, number one? Some people's websites are still taking me to like GoDaddy, uh, you know what I mean? Hosting sites, you know, where the, the domain you could tell hasn't been paid for yet, but they just lock that part in. There's nothing live. Uh, you, YouTube is the wave. Everybody's on YouTube. I search your name. I can't find you speaking at engagements and not just you, but just in general, just the local politics thing. So yeah, I've been done, I've been doing podcasting for five years, interviewing everybody from business owners, musical artists, entrepreneurs. So I've kind of sharpened my skills in terms of interviewing, uh, over the last five years and on different platforms doing live events. So I was like, I might as well just Google who's on the ballot in North Carolina and start sending an email out to everybody that is trying to put their, trying to put themselves forward to run for some sort of political office or board or county or whatever. So in my search, of course, just right off the NC gov website or whatever, I get this spreadsheet that they've combined, that they've made on who's going to be on the ballot. Where it took me to actually, I ended up on yours. Googling your name, went to your website, and I've been using the spreadsheet that you've created, the, the PDF document with everything that I'm looking for, people's websites, addresses and everything. And I was like, this is for sure. The first person I'm calling for sure. That, it's up on the computer right now. I got it on my, I got it on the computer, got it on my phone. Because the spreadsheet that's actually on the, the website, it sucks compared to what you put together. You literally made it easy. So I was like, oh yeah, you gotta be the first person I reach out to. And you're the first person to mess, to message me back too, on top of that. So, uh, yeah, welcome, man. Welcome to Channel M News, under Menace with Terry Entertainment, you know? Thank you.
Thanks for focusing on local.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. It's just, uh, and then when I do, now that I'm into my research, it's like, oh, this is deep. And I see why local politics is the most important politics because
Especially this year.
Especially this year because just some of the things that I've seen come up on Reddit, forums and things of that nature. I'm like, oh, this is happening. This is literally affecting here. You know what I mean? Like, let's not talk about the whole state. Let's not talk about nationally. These are the things that they're do, they're talking about now. So yeah, I'm reaching out to everybody. So, um, I like to just start from the beginning anytime I do an interview. Uh, we're gonna start with born and raised and kind of like what it's like, where you, and how you got to North Carolina.
All right. So give me basic ideas of time. Are you talking, you want the two minute version or you want the 12 minute version?
Let me get that seven.
So I was born in California.
Okay.
I grew up in San Diego. Um, my family system was kind of fractured, uh, very unhealthy. Um, like skating along the bottom of viability.
Gotcha.
And, uh, one thing that, um, I was really fortunate.
Yeah.
I was, lived in a really great school district. And part of it was the school, part of it was the district, but part of it was the county and the state at the time.
Okay.
So when I was young, I told myself that I worked my ass off.
Right, right. Period. Yeah.
And I did.
Yeah.
Uh, and that was the story I told that how I got out of my family system's downward trajectory.
Hmm. Gotcha. Okay.
Then I got a little older and I realized, um, okay, the teachers, they did have a little part in that.
Right, right, right. When you actually look back on what helped contribute to my success. Right.
And then, uh, when I got older still, I started to realize just how funding works in a county and at a school district level.
Okay.
And I realized, well, you know what? There was also a school board involved and there was also, there were also county commissioners involved. And at the time, the state of North Ca, or the state of California where I was, uh, where I grew up, had invested heavily in education all through the fifties and the sixties. And so by the time I got to school in the seventies, we were really riding the crest of that investment.
Gotcha. Okay.
So I really did get a great education. I got a great, uh, preparatory work in elementary school, had a great high school, had access to AP courses, had access to all kinds of things that made it possible for me to get into UC San Diego, which made it possible for me to get into graduate school. All the things that I did were kind of laid out right for me.
From that foundation.
Yeah. And then now fast forward 25 years, now I've got kids and, uh, we're getting to, we're, we moved to North Carolina about the time they started school.
Okay, okay.
And throughout the eighties and the nineties, uh, we, North Carolina, Wake County, uh, had invested heavily in education. And so they got to ride the crest of that. And so, um, at a very visceral personal level, I know education's capacity to turn a life around. It turned my life around.
Right.
I've watched the lives that my kids are now set up for. They're out into their careers. They're launching their careers. They got a foundation through Wake County, through their, through North Carolina college system. They got a great start. And so, um, this is kind of personal for me, you know, I, it's because of where I started that, um, you know, the, somebody in our, I'm a minister.
Right. I was gonna ask, did that start in California or that started in North Carolina?
Uh, that started California.
California. Okay, okay.
But a woman in our congregation was the one who came and asked me to run. She's involved in local politics. She was actually just looking for advice because I, she thought I might know someone in the district.
Who would, who would be interested in running. Gotcha.
And when she was describing it, and she was describing the, uh, yes, I'm a minister. You should also know I'm not a very good one. She was describing the shitstorm that has gone on at the school board these last few years.
Yeah.
And I realized, oh, you know what? I'm kind of wired for that.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of the folks who were leaving the school board this time around are just worn out by the emotional cost of getting screamed at. And, uh, and I thought, I can get screamed at. I don't have to do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of built for this. Yeah.
But had she asked me anything else besides word of education, I would, would not, I, I'm not particularly interested in politics. Although politics is a significant part of what happens. That's, it is one of the levers of power that we pull. Uh, if we want to make change, we do have to get political.
Right, right.
But that would not have been the trajectory of my life had it not been education. But because she asked me about education or she, I suggested it after, uh, I said, I think I could do this.
Right, right, right. After you'd like hear it everything.
And that's because education's had such a critical pivot point, been a turning, uh, a place of turning for me, a crossroads for my life.
Yeah, yeah. And then, um, you're speaking about how in California, you came into the, the kind of back end of an area that was heavily invested in the education. When would you say the decline in investment in education in the Wake County area started happening?
I know exactly what started happening.
Two thousand eight or something.
It started exactly in two thousand eight. That's when we started. Our per pupil, uh, expenditure has gone down every year. Now, the General Assembly will say, hey, we're spending more money on education than we've ever spent before.
Right, right, right.
Well, two things. Number one, inflation. Yeah, things go up.
Yeah, because gas is not the same.
Number two, we've got a whole lot more students than we had the last year and the year before and the year before.
Right.
So the, the metric to look at is really per pupil. And every year from two thousand eight until twenty twenty-two, per pupil spending has gone down at the state level. Now, I got a little soapbox on that. If you want me, I can keep going.
You keep going. Yeah, yeah. This is your time. Yeah.
So it's very difficult to look at the General Assembly and not see a strategy in place. And it seems like the strategy that's in place is to underfund and underfund and underfund and underfund to the point of failure. Because that's what we're doing. We're underfunding.
Yeah.
But over here on this other side, we started with this voucher program that was basically, uh, for schools that are failing, we're going to provide state money for those people to go get their own education. Because, you know, look, we haven't been able to do it through the schools. Your school is failing, but that's a very small percentage. Because we did invest heavily in education. There aren't that many failing schools.
Right.
But every year since we launched the voucher program, we've expanded the criteria and expanded and expanded and expanded. So we're undercutting public education funding and we're expanding voucher funding. It's hard not to see that as a trajectory to move toward privatizing education in the idea that privatizing is going to, uh, give us better outcome, you know, because folks who are on one side of the political divide think private enterprise is always going to be better than government enterprise. And there's something to that. There's something said about that.
Of course, yeah, of course, yeah.
So we keep, uh, diminishing the chances of success for public education, expanding.
Majority of people are gonna, the children are even going to begin with.
Well, here's the thing. Eventually, no. Because if you follow this trajectory where it goes, it gets to the place where we just divvy up the money. And we say, okay, there you go. You're on your own.
Right, right.
If we do that, that's gonna be great for wealthy families. Because wealthy families will take that money and they'll no longer have to pay for private schools, or they're gonna find some way to get into a charter school that needs, uh, like, a charter school that needs additional parental funding. They're gonna find a way and they're gonna get a great education.
True.
And then the kids are gonna be left with the $7,000 a year, are going to be clustered together into schools that won't have the economies of scale that public education has. And consequently, there's, the education will decline. So you would think that would be a great deal if you're rich.
True.
But that's very short sighted if you're rich. Because here's what's gonna happen. Those wealthy kids are gonna go to school. They're gonna get a great education. They're gonna get all the AP courses. They're gonna get all the enrichment courses. They're gonna get into great colleges and they're gonna go out and then they're gonna graduate. And when they do, they're gonna come out and enter a society. And the society that they're gonna enter is a society that is no longer, had no longer, has been invested in the good of the whole, but it's only been invested in the good of the part. So if you want to think about the, the, the negative things are gonna be happening when we get down the road, this isn't gonna be a good deal, not for the wealthy people, not for the not wealthy kids.
Right, right.
It's just not gonna be a good deal. Because one of the things that public education has done for us is it has created an institution that binds us together and gives us our best hope of all of us doing well. And without ever saying these words, because my God, nobody would say these words, without ever saying these words, the strategy seems to be, eh, we did enough of that. Now we need to start taking care of me and mine. I gotta start taking care of us. And, and when we do.
We're good on the public. Let's worry about the, the little group over here that.
And so it's, the words are never spoken, but it says basically, me and mine. You're gonna take care of me and mine now. And in the long run, that's gonna be good for you too. It's gotta be. But it's just not gonna be.
Right, right. Hmm. That makes a lot of sense. Okay. So what are some of your plans in order? Because that's one side pushing now, but what is your plans to kind of counteract that? Or actually a better question, everybody wants, everybody, you gotta figure out, you always have to figure out ways where both people can come and agree. You know what I mean? Where's, where do you see like the compromise even coming to where you can meet that level playing fields and, um, kind of establish something to where that, that won't happen?
Yeah. So the, so I've not done politics before.
Right, right. Yeah, yeah. You and me both. You schooling me right now. So.
I've done a whole lot of organizational stuff. I've done a whole lot of people stuff. So I understand the, the workings of people working together in institutions. So I understand that part.
Right.
But I don't understand necessarily the, the political arena. So the first thing I did when, uh, um, I said yes, after they asked me, uh, several folks asked me, was go start interviewing people, saying, all right, school board member. I talked to as many school board members. I don't think I've got them all, but I've got most of them.
Yeah, right, right.
I just said, what's it take to do a good job? What is the job? What are the limits of the job? What are their, what are the authorities? What are the accountabilities? What are the things you've gotta do? What are the things you have the capacity to do?
Right, right.
And I learned a lot of what school board members cannot do.
Okay. Which is, which is quite a bit, pretty much.
They cannot affect the budget. That happens at the state level. They cannot affect the curriculum in the schools. That happens at the Department of Public Instruction. There's a whole lot of things they cannot do. What they do is create policies that give the school, uh, the district office, the best chance of succeeding. Create policies that will do that. All right. So I, I can think in those categories. That's a good thing to do. But one of the other things that I did find out is that one of the best, one of the, one of the powers that a school board member has is to change the narrative.
Yeah.
Uh, because we do have a bully pulpit and we get to tell stories. And right now there is a very organized story being told that is inaccurate.
Okay.
And nefarious. But let's just go with inaccurate.
Okay, 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 okay.
And the inaccurate part is schools are bad, schools are failing. Teachers are sucking the lifeblood out of, uh, our public monies. Teachers are the problem. And that is so incredibly untrue, especially in Wake County. In Wake County, our teachers have behaved heroically over these last three years against incredible odds. We are not paying them enough money to live in the county they teach in. You can't live in Wake County on a teacher's salary. So in the face of that disrespect, in the face of working conditions that have been extraordinarily difficult because we don't have enough staffing, because we aren't paying enough money, so that people are having to cover, robbing Peter to pay Pauls to cover everything, incredible, uh, working conditions, incredibly difficult working conditions without money. And on top of that, we've been telling them, you're the problem, teacher. Now, here's the thing. Teachers and people who go into education, they go in it because they want to change the world. They go into that with these ideals. I want to make it better for people.
That's like the whole point. Yeah.
They do that and they know, they know they're not gonna make a lot of money.
Exactly. Cause you've signed up for a job like that, knowing you're not gonna be, you're not gonna get rich.
But you are gonna make a significant difference in society. So then we turn around and we tell them a story that says, you're not making a difference in society. You're actually sucking out of society. You're actually making it worse for society.
That's gotta savage.
And, and then we look up and say, now, how will we keep teachers? Why are we having such a problem with teachers?
With church turnover retention.
There's this huge, massive orchestrated national, uh, strategy to come and take the big polarization problems or wedge issue things that we've got and move them down to the localist of levels. And the localist of level is where your kid goes to school. So we're gonna start telling that story very loudly, showing up and screaming it at school board meetings. We're gonna start taking this story. We're gonna start promoting it out at school boards and teachers and saying, you are the problem. And you're the problem because you've got a dusty book on the backside of the library that no kid has ever checked out. That talks about Timmy's Two Moms.
Right, right.
By the way, have you noticed that your kids have got internet? So let me tell you, this is not the problem.
Right, right.
And we're gonna bring in critical race theory that is really, uh, the Department of Public Instruction has not approved critical race theory. It's come down through this very tedious, long process. It is not in the schools. But we're gonna tell a story that we are somehow indoctrinating our kids around race. We're gonna find whatever will create a wedge. And it's usually sexuality and race. We're gonna find whatever creates a wedge. We're gonna drive that wedge and drive that wedge. Because we want to promote a narrative that says schools are bad. And that just isn't true. And so one of the things that a school board gets to do is the bully pulpit to fundamentally change the narrative. Cause right now, Wake County schools have done heroically. They have done very well. If you look at our graduation rates, if you look at our acceptance rates into vocational training, into four-year colleges, if you look at the number of teachers that we have that are board certified, you look at the number, you look at how our in-service training program, we are the envy of school boards. And there are still these yahoos showing up screaming at us, saying that the school is bad. And it's not bad. It's got problems.
Of course, yeah.
It's got things that need to be fixed. It's got inequities. It's got all kinds of stuff going on. But my Lord, if you look at what we're doing at a hundred and ninety-three schools that we're getting right, this is the story that we want to tell, this very small part of what's going wrong, when this is going right. So I think one of the reasons, one of the things that a school board member can do is change the narrative, narrative and start telling the truth. Start telling what's really going on.
Yeah. See, one of the things, yeah, cause I mean, just like you said, uh, with sexuality or race, those are those screaming things that you hear, like, and in my mind, I was like, are they really teaching critical race theory in class, at Wake Tech right now? Or at, in, you know, the middle school?
They're not even teaching it at AP courses.
That's what I was like. I don't know. It's like, I hear it. And I was just like, I don't know. My little sister, uh, she's a little bit younger, but she's the last person I knew that was like in school. I have a nephew in school, middle school right now too. But he's never come home talking about like critical race theory or anything along the nature. Um, I, I know a lot of conversation is also surrounding, um, re-changing the actual curriculum. But just based off what you said earlier, curriculum can't be changed. That's set at a state level already, right?
Well, there are certain applications that could be made. But the criteria and the standards are set at the state level.
Okay, 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 okay.
It's a very tedious process. It has a lot of public input. It has a lot of political input.
Yeah, I was about to say that, yeah.
It's a very long process. And once that curriculum is set at the Department of Public Instruction, well then, from then on, the, what the district does is figures out how we're going to meet those criteria.
Hmm. Gotcha. Okay. And then, uh, means, depending on how you get about meeting that criteria, is what you guys have, uh, room to shift and change around kind of.
No, not even the, that's not really the school board's, uh, role.
Priority or role, yeah.
That has to do with how, how curriculum is executed, happens among, at the district office. And that happens among teachers getting involved, the community getting involved. And lots and lots, by the way, you know, the other thing that you hear screamed about a lot is parental choice. There's a lot and lot of space for parents to come in and weigh in at every step of that process.
Okay.
And when they don't, and then begin to tell a story that they're not allowed to, that's, uh, there's, there's a word for that.
Right, 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 right. Yeah. Um, what would you say some of the biggest, um, complaints there were that you heard? Uh, when you were going around interviewing people before you even decided to run? What was saying, what were some of those biggest complaints that you heard and things that you know that you can go in there and kind of make changes on?
And so there's lots of people I've spoken to. Are you think, are you asking more about parents? Are you talking about teachers and people in?
Let's start with the teachers. Let's start with the teachers and staffers. Yeah.
Um, I think the teachers are really complaining about the money.
To pay. Yeah, at the end of the day, yeah.
Because if we, uh, start them out at a level where they can't live in the county they teach.
That's kind of crazy.
Then that isn't gonna.
Yeah, that's kind of crazy. Yeah.
Uh, they complain about the, the trajectory that, um, this General Assembly has been heading in terms of things like teacher licensure. So in other words, given that we're pushing this narrative, that teachers are sucking at the teat of society. And just given that, then there's this strong emphasis to make sure we hold teachers accountable. And so that means we gotta make sure that there are metrics of behavior. Well, then that drives teaching to the test. And then everybody looks up and realizes, we're not really educating our kids. We're teaching to the test. And then that drives certain performance indicators. And so given the, the general tenor of the General Assembly toward public schools, there's a lot of mistrust that whatever licensure comes out of this next round is going to be actually in teachers' best interests.
Gotcha. Okay.
So the, the sense that we're going to say, we're, one of the big complaints teachers have made is that you, uh, measure my, uh, your metrics are measured by reaching an absolute standard. But if I start with a child who's way behind that standard and I actually create two years of growth, I still haven't met the metric, but I just created two years of growth and I get penalized because they didn't reach third grade leading, reading or fifth grade, whatever.
Even though I'm doing two other teachers' works. Yeah.
I've done this great progress. So then, okay, we're going to then reward growth. But then when you look at the metrics that are going to measure growth, they're very fuzzy and very difficult and very problematic, actually. Am I gonna measure it by tests? Well, we've seen the problems with that. Am I gonna measure that by public, uh, or by, uh, observation where there's an administrator who comes in and observes? Well, that's kind of fraught with VCs, you know? Are we, that's very subjective. How are we gonna measure this? So if you're going to say you want some kind of accountability, then you better create it so that there's a system that is equitable, there's a system that's going to work. And I don't think there's a lot of trust in the hearts of teachers that the General Assembly has their best interest at heart. Because, and here's a bunch of reasons why.
Right, right, right.
But now we've come to this licensure thing that's kind of brewing this year and are pretty convinced, eh, I don't think I'm gonna trust.
Right, yeah. So it's like, it's up to you or somebody in that position to kind of champion the teachers so to make sure that their voices aren't unheard. Pretty much. Gotcha. Now, what about, uh, parents? What are some of the biggest complaints you might've seen, uh, from parents?
So, uh, when I've been meeting with parents, one of the primary things that I've been doing is explaining how the systems work.
Gotcha. Cause it's, it's so fuzzy.
And regularly, people will say to me, I did not know that. I did not know, I did not know how schools were funded. I did not hold, know how the school bond is going to work. I did not know how curriculum happens. I did not know what the authorities of teachers are and are not. I did not know what the public, Department of Public Education, uh, Instruction does. I did not know. So part of it, meeting with the teachers, most, I mean, meeting with parents, most of the complaints are really kitchen table complaints. Like, how am I gonna get my kid to school? And without enough bus drivers, you know, the food in the cafeteria, oh my Lord, this is not nutritious. Uh, you know.
I gotta talk about that.
I got, you know, there, there's teachers over here who don't have teaching assistants and, you know, so there's.
And they got thirty, they got twenty-five, thirty kids or one person type of, yeah.
So one of the schools locally, um, concerned parents understandably about a shooting. They're concerned about it.
Right, right, yeah.
And across the street, there's another school that has an already district approved set of locks on the doors so that a teacher can go in there, lock the door from the inside. This school.
In a lockdown situation.
You cannot lock the door from the inside. You have to go outside. You have to use a key. You have to lock it. Then you can close, then you can be locked in. So the concern is, hey, we would like to get the, um, locks that are already approved by the district across the street. Well, there isn't money for that. There isn't, uh, you know, if we do it for that school, we gotta do it for every school. We gotta do it. So the PTA goes out and says, okay, we'll raise the money. We'll do that. We'll, we'll raise the money to do that kind of thing. And then hits the red tape. That becomes a real concern. When we stand back and look at it from a large enough distance, we realize that because the General Assembly has underfunded, 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 the counties made up that gap. And they made up that gap. They made up that gap from building money. So we are spending half of our money now on what is our constitutional obligation.
Which is supposed to be going to the school districts.
We spend half of our money, county money, to pay for operating expenses. The constitution says, the North Carolina state constitution says, first article, that the state is responsible for that. We send them our tax money, they're obligated to send it back.
Right.
Every county has a county supplemental. Well, I think there's two or three that don't.
Right.
So in other words, they're not meeting their, their constitutional objective. You've probably heard of this case that's working its way through the courts this last twenty years, Leandro. And it's, uh, it's coming on saying, uh, hey, you haven't been meeting your constitutional obligation for a long, long time.
It's time to pay up.
Wake County, uh, our county commissioners also have behaved heroically. They have, uh, worked really hard to fund the gap that the state has left unmet.
Right.
Now, they've had to do that by letting other things go. They've worked really hard not to raise property taxes. They've had to raise it some, but at some point you can't keep raising property taxes. They're issuing bonds. They're doing what they can do. But basically what they're doing is they're borrowing from what is their constitutional obligation to pay for buildings. It's our job to pay for capital projects. Our, the county's job. And so they're taking half of our capital project money and they're providing it to pay teachers and to pay nurses and to pay the operating expenses that is the state's job. So consequently, now this school that needs locks on their doors is in competition with another school. You know, that rubber matting that used, that put on the bottom of playgrounds so kids would go down. Well, that stuff's gotten bad. And so they've had to shut their playground down. So imagine an elementary school with no playground.
For children to burn energy?
With kids that need to burn energy. Alright, so that's crazy. Not having a lock that will lock from the inside, that's crazy. But that competition has set up for resources because the state hasn't been paying.
Over that, over.
They're having to squabble over scraps when the state's got a seven million, nine million.
The money should be there regardless. I should just have to ask for it and get it done. Yeah.
The state's got, uh, this huge surplus, seven, nine billion dollars. Call it a rainy day fund. And look around, inflation. Look around what's happening in our schools. It's raining. It's a rainy day fund.
It's raining for sure.
But that money hasn't been sent. And so consequently, the county is positioned to squabble over these scraps. And parents, when I've talked to them, are caught up in the squabble. They're saying, why can't our kids get a playground? Of course. Why can't our kids get locked on the doors? Why can't we get better nutrition? And they're looking really at kitchen table issues without understanding what's driving the lack of those issues. It really starts way back with the General Assembly.
Right, right, right.
Now, back to your original question. It's a roundabout way to get here.
It's all good. Yeah.
But one of the things that a school board can do is begin to break down this tension that exists between rural counties in North Carolina and urban counties.
Gotcha.
Because the thing that urban counties can do is draw on growing property taxes. And rural counties can't do that. So this underfunding that's been going on, they've not just been underfunding Wake County or Mecklenburg County. They've been underfunding all the counties. And so as you can imagine, if you live in a rural county and your kids are not getting it and you, your county can't raise it, you got a little resentment going on. So right now, there's resentment between the rural and the urban counties. And consequently, that resentment drives a, we're gonna vote for our guys because they don't like you.
Hmm. It's, it's, it's not even about the, well, be, this is, this is just, we're beefing right now. These are my boys. These, these are your boys.
Right. So what we could do at the school board is begin to develop relationship and mutual self-interest alliances to begin to go to the lobby. I, I don't think, I, I mean, go and lobby the, the state. I, I don't think the state are bad people.
Right.
They've got a, um, they've got an ideology about how state money ought to be spent. They've got a, um, they've got an ideology about how state money ought to be spent. They've got an ideal, ideology about how private is better than public, how we get more efficiencies out of that. And, you know, that would be a great discussion to have if we had more time, because there are good points on both sides.
Right, for sure.
But they're not bad people, but we just need to break out of the rural, urban tension. So we can look around and say, look, all of our kids.
The competitive part of it.
So the thing about funding schools is we talk a lot about waste. But here's the thing, you're either going to have a reading specialist in your third grade group, or you're not going to have a reading specialist. That salary, that insurance is either going to be there or it's not going to be there. You're either going to have a teacher's assistant in the classroom at kindergarten and first grade and second grade, or you're not going to have a teacher assistant. You're going to either, you're either going to have nurses or you're not going to have nurses. You're either going to have the people in the building who can help education happen effectively, or you're not. And if you look at what happened in the eighties and the nineties, when we had them in the room, the educational outcomes were unequivocal. We, we performed stellarly. We performed very, very well. So it's very easy. The, the, the research is in, the data is already there. We know what's going to create great educational outcomes. And it is prioritizing and spending for education.
Okay. Now, that's something that with, because there's a, a bond on the ballot, the Wake County School Bond, um. Is that what it's called? The Wake County School?
Yeah, I can't remember how many million, but.
It's like five hundred and something billion, yeah.
It's six hundred something, five hundred goes toward buildings, you know.
Gotcha, okay. What are some of the things that, well, it has to get passed through first, right? So in order to get it. Um, but if it does come through, what are some of the things that you think, um, would be best used in order to kind of, with, with, with that funding? Where do you think some of those?
Well, that funding, it, it's county funding. And it goes toward county obligations and county obligations are for capital expenses. That bond is set aside for buildings, for schools.
So for that rubber toy man can be up, uh, stuff like that.
It, it's for that. Now, right now, the school board has set up a seven-year rolling plan for facility development. Now, that can include, include building new schools, but can also include upfitting old schools. And a lot of our schools were built in the nineties because that's when our growth was really exploding. And a school has, was built for a forty-year lifespan. We've stretched it to fifty now.
I went to Apex, they tore that down, built a new one, so, yeah.
Well, that's supposed to happen every forty years, it's probably going to be every fifty years. And so a lot of those schools built in the nineties, it's come and due. And so our seven-year rolling plan is really underfunded for what's about to hit. The wave of schools are going to need to be redone. So. Adjusting what happens within that seven-year plan. This is one of the other things that, uh, I've been, uh, surprised that parents didn't understand about a bond. Most people have associated, if we pass a bond, we up our taxes. But it's actually just the opposite. If we pass a bond, we've just created a, a, a situation where we won't have to raise taxes. So Wake County has a whole portfolio of bonds that we've issued. Some of them are ten, twenty and thirty-year bonds. And they, we take them out or we issue them and then we pay them off. We issue them, we pay them off. The, it's kind of, this is a simplistic way of thinking about it. Those bonds get, uh. We issue new bonds when we've paid off enough that we can afford to issue new bond. We can keep paying what we've been paying because we've already paid these all off. It's not exactly the way it works. The way it works is we have to maintain our triple A, um, rating on all of our bonds. And in order to create, keep a triple A rating, we have to have the debt ratio to, uh, income ratio at certain numbers. Which means we got to pay some things off.
Before we start giving out more money.
Because we do that, what we do is we spread out the, uh, expenditures over a longer period of time. The growth that's coming to the county will be participating in paying off that expenditure. So all the people who are here now don't pay for future buildings. We kind of spread that out over time.
That makes sense.
So that bond will go. Now, within that seven-year rolling plan, there's also a, uh, shift, I think, among several school board members. Have already started to make this shift to build fewer new buildings and to begin to upfit. Because upfitting dollars will go further, that's one. But then the other thing is growth has slowed in Wake County. You know, we're not living in the nineties. We're, the rate at which we're, we're still growing as a county, but we're just getting all old people.
Right, yeah, yeah. It's not like there's more kids being born, yeah, yeah.
So now in the western part of the county, that's not true. The western part of the county, uh, the kid population is exploding. They're having the problem that the north part of the county had, you know, fifteen years ago, twenty years ago. And so some of this tension is really existing over there. And so we're, that's where we're getting to the kitchen table issues like. Are we going to send our kids to year-round school? Because year-round provides more students in the same number of classrooms. Or are we going to drive further and participate in the magnet program? Or are we going to get out of the school system altogether and go to a charter? Are we going to, what are we going to do? By the way, that's not actually accurate. If you're in a charter, you're not actually out of the school system.
Right, right, true, true.
We can talk about that too.
Yeah, yeah, for sure. Uh, now let's move over to like, uh, security. I know one of the concerns that has been circulating, uh, just with the times that we're in is school security. We were talking about the locks earlier. Um, Michelle Morris, who's, uh, somebody running right now in District Nine, even suggested. Um, each teacher should have a gun and like a lockbox or whatever. Some people think that's radical, or some people think that's extremes, some people think that, that she's got some points, you know. So how do you feel about? Security in Wake County school systems and, uh, something like that where each student, each, uh, teacher did have a concealed firearm?
I've talked to a lot of teachers and not a single teacher says, ooh, give me a gun.
Like, I don't want to be a shooter.
So keep in mind the temperament. A person who decides to be a teacher. Wants to run a dirty hairy scenario.
That's true. I didn't think about it like that.
So we've got two very different people. So. Uh, there is a, there is a sensible movement out there. You know, there are crazies who are just talking about, give us all guns. There's a very sensible movement about how guns could be an effective deterrent within a school system. The problem again comes down to execution. When you start executing, you start to realize we are now dealing with dynamite. And there's problems with execution. If we get this wrong, we really get this wrong. We gotta be very, very careful with anything that we do. So for the most part, I think the mainstream among people I've talked to on school board. Uh, yeah, kind of issues is, no, we're not moving toward arming teachers. That would not be the direction we go. But that doesn't mean we're not going to do nothing.
Right, right.
Uh, Wake County had an external audit, um, year ago, year and a half ago, something like that. In which we looked at all of our security processes and we came out very well. What we have been doing. Uh, it's, it's not public information because part of what makes us secure is that we don't make this public information. But, um, the external audit came in and said in terms of how we're handling points of entry, how we're handling, uh, safety systems. How we're training our SROs, how all these things are going, we're making great improvements. Then we do an internal audit every year. Now, what that internal audit does is it sets a yearly agenda for a constant state of improvement. So we're doing well and we're improving every year. We've got a system in place to improve every year. And we just came out with a MOU, a memorandum of understanding between the, the, uh, school board. Between the school system and all the agencies that provide our SROs. Because the thing about SROs is we know that how a white person experiences a police officer. And a black and brown person experience a police officer, very different. And that's going to show up in our schools as well. We also know that law enforcement people are trained in law enforcement. And when they show up in schools, they're working with children. And there's a world of difference between working with a child and working in law enforcement. So a specialized kind of training for SROs be to be trained in, uh, de-escalation strategies. To be trained in, uh, restorative justice strategies, to make sure that they are working in their purview. Because it's not really the police officer's job to handle, uh, dress code violations. But oftentimes, they're sent to dress code violations, which means now they've created some negative energy. And they can't go and develop their contacts around things that really need to be looked at. We got, SROs are there to help us deal with drug issues, help us deal with violence issues, things that they really need to be working on. They're not working on because they've created this tension because they're going around, you know, telling people they can't wear this or that.
That's crazy. I didn't even know that they were given that responsibility to those research.
That's all, that's school to school. But part of this memorandum of understanding is to be able to shift away from that. Then the other thing that's going on is long been known is the school to prison pipeline, where we start working with kids around behavior issues. And we go automatically to a, um, this, not expulsion, what's, what's a short-term expulsion called? Kids out walking on the streets, kids gets in trouble, the kids ends up in trouble with the law, the kids end up in school to prison. How do we intervene in that process and getting our SROs involved in that? And one of the primary tools that we have that has excellent results is restorative justice. How do we begin to make things right? On a relational basis so that we make, uh, when there is a violation, there is a restoration. How do we begin to do that? And so we've got great first beginnings toward training our SROs to be working with children, to be working in a school system. And we've got great work going on in terms of what we have done and what we're doing on a continual basis every year.
True, okay. Yeah, let me see. Uh, let's see, I have something else in here. Hit that critical race theory. Talked about the guns in the school. Let's see.
About nutrition, food.
Yes, that's what I said I wanted to go back to. Um, and real quick, just, I just wanted to just say this. Back when I was at high school, I graduated two thousand and eight. I remember it was like, certain schools were like, the, the research officer, it was like legendary for tasing kids. Which is kind of crazy, but it's like, that, when you said they need different additional training, I'm like, yeah, you're right. Cause there was, there was a definite thing where it was like, so, so got tased overnight the other day. And I was like, dang, I got tased.
To be fair, some of the kids are pretty burly.
Some of the kids are my size, like, they're, they're, yeah, yeah. Been lifting weights five days a week. So I understand, some of you got to put down. But it was like a trend. It didn't matter who you were. You were getting tased if you had any altercation. But yeah, let's jump into the nutrition because I actually know, I know quite a few teachers, um, but. One of them sent me a picture of the food in the school and I just couldn't believe this was real. I was like, no, 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 this is like, you're joking. You pulled this off the internet. The nutrition is crazy. I mean, we're talking like for breakfast crackers, like the little Ritz crackers, Dano's yogurt. And just like a slice of cheese, like crazy, like, I was like, no cereal, no juice, no bagel, you know what I mean? That's what I had for breakfast. Uh, we didn't always have a hot breakfast, but we also had, we, they covered the food groups, at least during breakfast and lunch. It is not, it doesn't seem to be that way consistently between all schools anymore. So what is, uh, what is, what is it like in Wake County? Cause I'm not sure about Wake County at least.
Parents complain.
Yeah, on a regular, I bet.
So, um, parents complain because when we see the food, it's unappetizing. Uh, and it's not nutritious. The food that is appetizing isn't healthy. So the complaints among the parents are, uh, this, this isn't, uh, this isn't a viable nutrition system. Because it happens every day, every day, every day. Once in a while, you can get away with, you know, eating junk food.
Of course, yeah.
Every day.
Yeah, every day, it's crazy.
Every day. Now, um, again, let's, that's what we complain about is what happens.
Yeah, how do we get to?
We start backing up further and we realize, why is that happening?
Exactly, you gotta go to.
Underfunding, underfunding, underfunding since two thousand and eight. And we start to realize, when we make decisions about our funding. We make decisions about the food that goes into our children's bodies. When we make decisions about our funding, we make decisions about how well they're reading. And how much help they're getting when they have problems with multiplication tables. We're making very kitchen table decisions. We're making decisions about bus drivers. Uh, one of the schools in my, my district, uh, has some kids that drive from eleven miles away. But it's a hard eleven miles because they're coming from down by Wake Med and they're coming all the way up four oh one. They're going through a lot of traffic. They can spend two hours a day on the bus. And that's exacerbated by, we don't have enough bus drivers. So when we make decisions, we make decisions about how long a kid sits on the bus. And a lot of those kids are getting treated reduced lunch and breakfast and they're not showing up in time for breakfast. Or they're not making it because the school bus doesn't show up and their parents are working and they can't get them there. So we make decisions about attendance, we make decisions about, uh, facility, food. We make all these very pragmatic decisions when we make decisions about funding.
So I didn't even realize there was a shortage on like school bus. So there's a, there's just like school bus yards of a bunch of.
Lots of buses, not many bus drivers.
Dang, so I mean, the pandemic.
Not even enough substitute teachers. Teachers have to cover, high school teachers are covering somebody else's period during their conference period. When they're supposed to be grading papers, when they're supposed to be. Be getting ahead, they're actually covering somebody else's class. So, and we make those decisions when we make funding decisions. We make disciplined decisions because kids that are not challenged are going to act out. We make these decisions about kids' long-term future when we make these funding decisions.
Right, right, right.
So even though, you know, it's a big abstract ethereal idea about the ideology of governmental spending. It very quickly shows up at the kitchen table. We have to have this discussion about how are we going to get the kids to school? What are we going to teach them? What are we going to feed them?
Right, yeah. It's a lot of discussions that need to be had. It's a lot of, um. That's crazy with the funding. Everything is just. Everything goes back up where it's just, that's, that's what, that's how I look at politics now anyway, where it's just like, you got to follow the money, you know what I mean? Uh, why is this happening? Who's getting paid from this? Who's, who's gaining financially, you know what I mean?
Now, again, this is not school board's job. I'm running for school board. I will just say as a human being, as a citizen of North Carolina, we're already sending them our damn money. We're sending them our tax money already. And they're sitting on this seven, nine billion dollar surplus and send the damn money back.
Right. That's crazy. So we just got to apply that pressure on that so that they start sending that money.
Well, here's the thing, in Wake County, we're already doing that. This isn't really a county issue. This is a ability to broaden the understanding and the coalitions across counties from one to another.
Gotcha. Let's see, oops. Trying to see if I think, I, I think I kind of covered everything else. What are, um. What are other things that you kind of want people to know while you're going on this, uh, campaign right now? Uh, what, what agendas are you pushing and, um, what are things that you think people have concern with that you want to keep people informed on with you as well?
Well, if you go to my website. You're, you're supposed to put all of your priorities on your website.
Yeah, that's a fact, yeah.
On the front page, I put, I got four priorities. Teachers, 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 teachers.
Right, right.
Now, it's not really true because it's also bus drivers. It's not true because it's also nutritional specialists. It's also true, we got to have counselors. But everything starts with teachers and how we support teachers. Everything starts with, uh, uh, an educational outcome is primarily determined by a connection. Between a student and a well-qualified teacher. If they make that connection, that child will learn and grow. Teachers know how to make up the learning loss we've done during the pandemic. Teachers know how to connect with students. But when we don't resource and when we tear down the morale and when we don't pay and when we don't support our teachers. They'll keep doing it because they're those kind of people. But they can't keep doing it for very long.
Right, yeah.
Uh, my campaign manager was a teacher for twenty-eight years, social studies teacher. In twenty thirteen, she was voted teacher of the year. They did a video documentary about her. By the time she came to the end, she was counting down the days to get out of there. The situation for teachers had so gradually, but so profoundly changed over the years from twenty thirteen to twenty twenty. That she couldn't wait to get out of there because the, the underfunding had created a horrible scenario. So we are losing our most qualified teachers and we're getting jobbers. We're getting people who will show up and put in some hours. And we want people with passion. We want people who've dedicated their lives to this. We want people who have been willing to make a sacrifice to have this role in society. So on my, on my website, when I say my priorities are teachers, 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 that implies a lot of stuff. You got to also provide bus drivers or else they can't teach. You've also got to take care of counselors. You got to take care of the, the, the social and the emotional sides of things. You got to have people who can work with, you got to have the support systems for the teachers. But we need to focus on the well-being of our teachers.
Okay. And, uh, let the people know where your, what, what your website is too as well.
DougforWake.com. DougforWake.com.
Yeah, 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 that way, yeah. DougforWake.com. And, um, number one, I wanted to appreciate you coming through. Um, it was a great conversation, man. Thank you so much. You educated us a lot. I'm sure you're going to educate a lot of viewers. Cause there's people who are in your, in the district that you're running for, uh, that have no idea.
So now listen, it doesn't matter if you're in my district. There's a slate of nine people running for nine boards right now. And they've all been endorsed by NCAE, so North Carolina Association of Educators. They will go look for the North Carolina Association of, uh, Educators.